Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on Monday, September 9th, 2019 at 6 o'clock. We'll start off with our invocation and Commissioner Yancey.
Anyone that would like to join, please stand. Gracious heavenly Father, we humbly come before you today and ask for your leadership, guidance in the decisions that would be made in leading our county forward. Please touch each one that's in this room, let our words be pleasing to you, and let us go in the direction that is pleasing to you. Please give us tribal mercies as we leave. Lead, guide, and direct us in all that we do. It's in your name that we ask. Amen.
Please continue to stand for our pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and start with our comments from our Commissioner and Manager. Now, I'll start with Commissioner Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see you out tonight. Just three things real quick. I have office hours tomorrow night from 4:00 to 7:00, I think in the conference room, right? Shannon, instead of the office 325, if anybody wants to talk about anything. Let me see, the second thing, I attended a meeting or a ribbon cutting at Forsyth Tech this past week for their security operations center. They got a grant and have put together like a real live security operations center in conjunction with the program that they are doing with the National Security Agency. And it's a cybersecurity type program, and it is really good. And they had an NSA rep down for this ceremony as well. And evidently, it's pretty difficult to get into the program that Forsyth Tech got into with NSA. So, it was very interesting and a really good program for people in Stokes County or anywhere else who would like to get into the cybersecurity type career field. So, I'd encourage you to check that out. And the last thing is my blog may be a day late tomorrow. We've got a big agenda tonight, and I've got another commitment in the morning, so I'll get it up as quick as I can for those one or two people that might be interested. So... That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. I want to go light tonight, just at my welcome to Mr. Morris, for all the folks that are here. Whatever reasons brought you here, I hope you feel like your time's well spent. I always hope that it won't be a one-time thing. Whoever's here, for whatever reason, I hope you'll come back again. Much rather look out and see people than look out and just see empty chairs. Feel like the process works better that way. Feel like when there's involvement beyond just our board, it helps fine tune things even a little more. But anyhow, I'll stop there. And, oh, there's a Stoke Stomp this weekend, isn't there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want to remind folks of that and raid and everything, so kind of put that on your calendar, if you will, please. Thank you. I'll stop there.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Yancey.
Thank you, Mr. X. Very quick, I'll just echo Commissioner Walker's words. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Encourage everyone to reach out to each of us commissioners with your concerns or ideas throughout the county. Our attendance with our streaming now seems to be a little bit lighter, but that doesn't mean that we're not reachable. Please reach out to us. I have some people with some issues throughout the county that have brought these to me, and we need to continue that. That's what we're here for, is to serve you guys, so please be vocal and let us know your concerns or any kind of issues that you're hearing. Other than that, welcome, everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner Yancey, for those words, and I want to say to each and every person here tonight how much I appreciate you coming out. I am a full believer that we are here to serve and work for our constituents here in Stokes County. And the citizens of Stokes County is what makes this county so great. And it is just a pleasure to be able to serve you. And once again, I'll echo the other commissioners and say welcome to you. Thank you for being here, and I hope you can come back. I hope you gained something out of tonight's meeting and come back again next time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Also, like I said, I appreciate you for everyone y'all being here. Always a pleasure to see people here in the room. And just remembering all those affected by the hurricane we just had, and I feel like we was pretty blessed that it kind of went back out to sea and didn't do one more damage when it done. With that, I'll turn that over to our County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to kind of recognize the Walnut Cove-London Senior Center. They celebrated 20 years of service. What they do for our seniors in the around the Walnut Cove area is great, the news and great what they do for them. They also have Kyle Hall. I know you guys seen it in the paper. I got you a little brochure in your package where they got recognized, and they actually flew the flag over the Capitol for them. And Kyle Hall come up and presented the flag to the representative at the Senior Center. And I just wanted to thank them for everything they do and tell them to just keep up the great work because they mean a lot in our community.
Thank you, sir.
With that, I'll go ahead and move on to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move on now to... We have a public hearing for the DSS Board and Board of Health. As a receive public input concerning the... basically putting the Board of Health and Department back together. And we had no one to sign up. Is there anyone? I'll go ahead and open the floor to anybody who has any comments about that. Okay? Any motion to close that? Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll move on now to our public comments. I believe I have one. And, Ms. Robin, say your last name, foreman.
Riddle Barker.
Riddle Barker, okay. I'll remember that next.
I'm the only one in Stokes, I'm sure. Robin Riddle Barker. My address is 1336 Hooker Farm Road, Westfield. And I just wanted to take my three minutes to invite all of you and all the people in Stokes County to a ribbon cutting for the state park on Thursday, September 19th, 2:00. It's at our new property on Orrell Road, which if you go through Danbury, turn right on Mountain Road, Orrell Road is to the right. It's part of about 900 acres that were added to the state park in the last year, and it's a beautiful new property. So, when you turn onto Orrell Road, both sides of the road, as far as the road goes, all the way to the mountain are now part of the park. It's spectacularly beautiful. It's old tobacco land and farmland. In recent past, it has been used for hunting lease, but now it's part of the park, and we have big plans for new electrical campground, some day use and some trailhead stuff out there, maybe a new group camp. Lots of stuff in the works. It's all in theory right now, but it's a property that already has roads cut into it and cleared areas that's just begging for campsites. And it'll take some, the burden off the top of the mountain, kind of spread it out. I've already met with Danbury to talk to them about a possible increase in traffic in the future and how the trail can connect to town and things like that. But I just want to invite anyone that's listening or reads this or sees it on Facebook or whatever to join us on the 19th at 2:00. If they want to RSVP, they can get ahold of me through my email or call me up, and be glad to have anybody show up and come see our new property. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you, Robin. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to our discussion agenda. That motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We don't have nothing on our information agenda, so we move on to discussion agenda. First, we have the Stokes County Planning and Inspections Fee Schedule. And that's Mr. David Southern.
I talked to you at our last Planning Board Commissioners Meeting concerning some events that would be taking place and some deficiencies that we have found over the last couple of years that we have not put into an updated fee schedule. You instructed me to bring a few of these that were most urgent in our minds to you in an upcoming meeting, and I would present you with this for your consideration. It's not necessary that you take any action on it potentially at this time, but we do need to address these because of circumstances that will be coming forward on things that have been presented to us for the next Planning Board and Commissioners Meeting concerning utility scale solar photovoltaic facilities. We have nothing in our current ordinance that addresses this whatsoever. We do have a fee for residential solar panel installations that we cover through the Electrical Code, and this is addressing something that we currently need. These projects are long-term projects, just as you receive them and approve them or not approve them. The ones that are approved may take 18, 24 months to actually be built down. What we've done is called across the state, looked at a variety of different fee schedules, and what we determined was, no one does it the same way. So, we looked at it realistically. What it would cost us is Inspection Department to reasonably go out and do these inspections. And what you see here is a fee that is based on utility type, not utility in the sense of a public utility, but a utility type structure for the building fee of 17 cent per solar panel or module. This is the individual panel or module, not the entire array, which is a connection of multiple panels. And 3 cent per solar panel or module for the electrical fee. This would not include your electrical service sub panels, inverters, or combiners, which would require a separate fee, which we would have in our Electrical Code, because these are things that you actually have to open up the box, take a look at the connections, make sure that it is compliant with the National Electric Code. In this, we also have a minimum fee for commercial solar photovoltaic. This would be for a smaller business that puts panels on, not large scale, not utility scale, that we would take a look at where we have to review the plans and take a look at this. So, a small business that wanted to put these on, we would do this for a fee, a flat fee of $250. Then, if you have any particular questions about this, the rest of it I'll go through. Okay. Then we had commercial plan review. This concerns commercial buildings only. We have not ever had a commercial plan review fee. 31 years, we've been doing it for free. And as things have become more complicated, I have an inspector who has Level 3s in all five trades, and we're able to perform plan reviews. He has had training in plan reviews. He has done this in a prior jurisdiction. This is only for commercial buildings, residential. We don't charge anything for residential plan review. That's not even required by the state to look at the plans, although we will do it. We do it for free, so it helps us out when we're doing the inspections. But as you see under here, under 4,000 square foot would be $125. 4,000 to 15,000 square foot, $250. 15,001 to 40,000 square foot, $325. And over 40,001 and 1 square foot, $800. Now, as you well know, we don't have a lot of use for these last few here as far as square footage. But a plan review takes anywhere from a simple plan to an hour or two, to it can take a couple of days. And then there's back and forth with engineers, architects, and contractors in working through a commercial plan. So, it is time consuming for the inspector, plus that inspector also is a field inspector, so it's multitasking that we do in an apartment. Condominiums, apartments, and townhouses would be $65 per unit. And then, as a utility scale solar photovoltaic facilities, $125 for the plan review. And then the last item that I'm covering is rezoning fees. Our current rezoning fee is $300 for district rezoning and $375 for conditional rezoning. And based on zoning regulations requirement, 99% of all rezoning petitions are conditional use rezoning, as we went to that a few years ago. There's also a charge of $6 per surrounding property under for the certified letter notification. The cost of advertising these rezoning petitions, the newspaper record is averaging between $400 and $600 based on the amount of rezoning petitions being requested. This does not include staff time for creating the notices or posting the property or anything about mailouts or any creating all that information. And what we're doing is proposing a fee of $650 for all rezoning petitions. And this is simply not trying to make money, it's just trying to cover the county's cost of advertising. And as stated before, Shannon can let you know of all the advertising that you do for all the meetings and public meetings and board meetings of any sort. There's a lot of advertising cost involved with that. And that's it. These were the three things I told you at the last meeting that I would try to bring forward in front of you.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Commissioner Morris.
David, on this thing where you're getting 20 cents, about 17 and 3 cents, is that, from your research, is that an average, kind of average for counties like us, above average or below average, would you say?
Well, I would say it's not the least of the fees, and it's not the largest fees.
Within the middle?
We would be in the middle. Some jurisdictions base it on total project cost. Example, Davie County is $3.25 per thousand of the cost, and these projects are millions of dollars. What you're doing here is a scale. You know, you have 100,000 solar panels, that's 20 cent a panel. These fees are reasonable based on what I've found throughout the state. And these facilities can range anything from 1 megawatt, you know, to 65, 70 megawatt facilities.
Okay. My next question is, once a solar farm, a commercial solar type farm is put in and completed, do you or any other departments have any recurring labor you have to put in or inspections or anything, or once they're completed and in place and everything?
The only thing from... We would get a fee if we had to go back to do the electrical building. The only reoccurring thing would be a zoning check, and that's really just making sure they met whatever conditions the board places upon a facility. And we do that, that's just part of the job of going out and dealing with it. So, it's not a fee I would consider excessive. And the cost would be, there would be a zoning charge included in this fee. But what we have, we have those things in place. What we didn't have was for these larger scale facilities.
Okay. On the commercial plan review, does a fire marshal do a separate one beside, in your own?
Yes, and the fire marshal is, as far as I know, has charged for years on this. We had just, we really didn't have anyone that was really capable, who had the levels of expertise to look at all the...
Are their fees similar, some similar amounts to what you're proposing?
I think they have more...
Is the review the same, basically the same review, or?
No, they base theirs on the Fire Code. The Department of Insurance regulates five fields of inspections: building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, which is what's covered under the Building Inspections Department. And the Fire Marshal's Office does fire inspections. My chief inspector's a Level 3 fire inspector also. I have probationary level, two fire inspections at one time. We don't enforce that code, although it's addressed in the building code, so knowing the code is helpful when you're looking at this. We also worked with the Fire Marshal's Office on each set of plans, commercial plans. We have to go out together a lot of times to look at the final product.
Most counties would have a separate fire and planning inspection being scheduled and everything.
We are separate departments, separately budgeted.
Okay, on the rezoning, there's no way to avoid this high advertising cost, right? Until some statute changes or something?
They should figure something out.
Like the internet or something?
We only have one newspaper record, and that's what we got to use.
And till they change that, then we're stuck with these fees then. I guess our board needs to have a policy of understanding of whether we're trying to make money, break even, or lose money on these fees. So, if we're going to at least break even, then I think we probably need to do these things you're proposing here. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, sir. David, appreciate you bringing this information for us. It looks like you've put some work into it, as usual. Got your facts and figures together pretty well. On the commercial plan review, refresh my memory, if you will, please. At what phase of a project does that come into play?
When they submit the application for a building permit.
That's early on.
Yeah, for commercial, everything's required in commercial to have a set of plans, whether it be like the Dollar General coming in, or like Nickelston's fence, which is a big project for us. They're required to have a set of plans detailed for all the trades on how you do the construction.
Now, similar question to one that Commissioner Morris had for you about comparable fees in other counties, appropriately sized or calculated to ours. How do these fees, to the best of your knowledge, compare with some of our other counties for similar actions?
Yeah, well, we checked five or six different counties, and some more urbanized, larger counties, and we kind of threw that out because the fees seemed too excessive when we were calculating kind of what we anticipate may be our project. To be reasonable, but also to cover costs, because when you're looking at this many panels with the staff that I've got, that means I'm an electrical inspector too, so I'm going to be going out with my two other guys that are electrical inspectors, and we would be looking, you know, at these panels. Now, they're not all going to come at one time, so it's not like you've got 100,000 panels that just show up overnight. So, the process of the time, because that takes time from other inspections, and like I said, we have a limited staff that can do the electrical part of it. That's just a side note for what I do as a department head, but we feel that this is reasonable, it's not excessive, and it would cover the cost of our ability to go do the inspections, and the county would not lose money by looking at it this way. These are economic development projects, and this is just like any commercial development. It has a process that it would go through and review, plan review, and also a cost of that permit.
Is also referring to the rezoning fees. Are those comparable as well to what we've found with other counties?
Yes, actually, in most cases, it's maybe a little below, but I've been here a long time, and I've never thought about the idea of you talking about whether you want to make money or not. That was many years ago. I was taught, you know, we were public service and to try just to meet the needs of the county, but it's gotten the past years, it's been more than a few years, and we just perhaps needed to go up on all our fees to get more current. I know our county, and Surrey County, City of King, they reviewed their fees, and you've said that perhaps in the budget cycle, we should look at our fee schedule or submit it in the budget cycle to be taken a look at. I feel like that this covers the cost. You know, whether the costs continue to go up, it might be something that we would readdress at that time. Some you'll make a little money off of. I say a little money, you'll cover your costs. Some of them you may not cover your cost. But we'll be more, right now, we're not covering it up. I'm losing, and it comes out of my budget, so I lose a couple of hundred dollars each time I do one of these. And I'm a strong believer in user fees. If you use the service, you're requesting that you should at least cover your costs without burdening the rest of the taxpayers with it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sir.
Commissioner Yancey. What's happening?
I'm good.
Just real quickly, David, you said you did compare this to maybe five or six other counties, some larger, some smaller, and we came out sort of in the middle.
Yeah, and they all do it differently. Some do it on value, some do it by... One county did it by length of conduit that you're looking at. They had a whole utility scale fee involved in putting things into it, and seemed a little complicated for the purposes. So, what we looked at was a less complicated fee that was simple enough to figure. Plus, we feel like that it's under, it's not like the Wakes, Mecklenbergs, those sorts of things. We don't feel like, even though the facilities are basically the same, their cost of operation is going to be more than our cost of operation. So, we feel like this would cover, will cover the department's cost plus the county's expense of providing vehicles, our training. You incorporate that into all of your fee schedules, that there is more to it than just an employee going out and taking a look at something and saying yes or no. There's a lot that goes into training and a state certified inspector, a lot of the equipment, the facility, just our facilities here, all that we incorporate into the fact that this is a building inspections and planning department. So, that taken into account, we felt like this was a fair fee.
So, in other words, comparison, you use counties such as Surrey, Yadkin, Rockingham, Davie.
Well, I used them that had facilities. Yadkin didn't have any facilities. Davie County did. The Davie County Planning Inspections Person used to work here, so I contacted him, and they did $3.25 per thousand, which comes out not too much different based on, we don't have any proposals. What I've got now is our first proposal, which you'll see in October. So, to gauge it on that, we were looking at it pretty similar in cost. But sizes of projects are different based on the megawatts that you're producing. So, to get just an apples-to-apples sort of thing is a little difficult, so we were just trying to gauge in the middle. I used Cabarrus County, we looked at the big counties, but there's a list of counties that you can call, and I've still got calls in, so I didn't think we would take action or anything tonight. We would just take a look at it, and I can provide more information as more and more people get back in touch with me.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. David, I appreciate you putting all this together for us. I know it took you some time on it, and I think it's a pretty reasonable request, what you got. Are you ready for us to take action on this next time, next meeting?
Well, I mean, that's, I'll leave that up to you. I can find more information if you're concerned about the averages of things. I'll be glad to look at some more. Like I said, we got, we talked to five or six different people, or counties, or people we know in these counties, and no one seems to do it. There's no standard way of how they do things. But then fee schedules in general sometimes are, some are based on value and some are based on square footage cost. You could do this on square footage cost. They all come up similar as far as the amount of money, but it's based on what your initial fee per square foot is, or if you do it like we were proposing per panel or based on valuation. You may come up more with one than the other. But typically, we've done things by, you know, the individual item or square footage of a structure, not so much on value-based permitting.
Okay.
But I'd be glad to look some more and try to get a little more detailed information on it.
Okay.
Like I said, tonight, I just want to get something in front of you, because we have nothing on the books right now. Wouldn't know how to charge if you actually approved something.
Okay. Commissioner Morris.
I think we probably should go ahead with this, because we've got a solar proposal coming in the next three, four weeks, so.
Well, I'd like to look at it just a little further. You know, you have opportunities on the next meetings, if you would like.
I don't need any more information.
I'm good.
They may, but I don't.
I'm good with it.
I'd say we put it on action for the next meeting.
Is the board good with that?
I'm okay with it. I'm shaking it.
All right.
One follow-up comment.
Commissioner Walker.
David, you've heard this before, I think, on other occasions. One concept that I have in mind that I hope will continue for our county is establishing a reputation as a business-friendly county. Now, with these new fees, can we still be viewed in that perspective, in your opinion?
Yeah, this is not going to... What we do is not going to stop anybody from economic development projects. It's, when I was doing economic development, this is not, these fees are in line with what other communities do, and commercial developers expect plan, they expect it. Actually, when someone comes to you and says, "It doesn't cost anything," and I've been hearing that for years, and I say, "Well, some of the services are, you know, we give to you to encourage you to come here." Unfortunately, you know, I could give a lot away, and it hadn't encouraged a tremendous amount. But we do still try to maintain that friendly and definitely want to help anybody working with will, anybody wants to come in, you know, we're not going to try to run them out with our fee schedule. That would not be very bright. I don't think this is going to make much of a difference to any prospective economic development project we have in the county.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And I will look further. If I find other information out, even though you're going to take action, I'll bring it back in front of you if I find something that just doesn't look right before you take any final action on the utility scale solar. I just want to make sure.
Okay. Thank you, David. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our Tax Ministry of Month Report. We've got Mr. Richard Brem.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How do I forget my book? Last time I forgot my book, I searched the office for two hours before I remember. I left it right here. First item I got, as always, is our monthly tax collection status report. Pleased to report to the board that we're at 54.35%. We've collected a little over $11,758,000 thus far. That's about $500,000 ahead of last year's space. So we're off to a good start. Next item I got, next four items are just the monthly releases and refunds. Won't go through those specifically, but they're normal for this time of the year. They're a little more than typical for months in the past. But when you send out a bill like we've sent out, you're going to have a few more than you normally do, just to clear up some clerical errors and things like that. Next item I've got, I've got two late present use-value forestry applications. Then move on to the one late elderly exemption application. And then I have a request from a business and one at Co. who's requesting the penalty portion of their business personal property discovery bill to be released by the board. And I've detailed that in the letter that you've got there. It is permissible under North Carolina General Statute 105312K for the board to take action and do that. And that's all I have. You know, unless you've got any questions.
All right. Any questions? Commissioner Walker?
Richard, I always find comfort in hearing your recommendations. So far as the delayed forestry requests, far as waiving the penalty, those types of things that you've brought to our attention this evening, what would be your recommendation regarding the items that we have before us?
I would say do it. I mean, you know, public relations is big. We need to keep that image of being taxpayer-friendly. And when we can go the extra mile, we need to do so. Previous boards in the past have done that, and it seems to have worked well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? As always, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and I would like to ask the following items to be moved. I need to ask for that, Shannon.
Let us approve the consent for next time. There's five items.
All right, I have five items that I want to move to. The September 23rd consent agenda is the real and personal releases, more than $100. Real and personal refunds, more than $100. The present use-value late applications, the late elderly exemption application, and the business personal property discovery penalty release.
Is the board good with that?
Sure. Consent agenda.
Consent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our transportation bids. Senior Services and DSS, Ms. Glenda Pruitt.
Hello, how are y'all this evening?
Good.
And how are you?
Oh, good. We've sent out the RFP for some additional transportation due to J.D. Cruz is ceasing his operation at the end of September. And actually, I sent it out twice, trying to get more response, but I had no luck. So I did receive two. One is from a gentleman that is in Rockingham County. He is basically just one van. The other one is actually out of California. They have assured us, because Stacy and Vicky met, and we were a little concerned because of where they're located and where we're located. And they assured us that they were going to be able to provide our needs and everything to that nature. And I have spoken with Lynn Knight, who had done some transportation for the General Care Transportation, and she was very pleased with the services that he had provided. So after speaking with Stacy and Vicky, I would like to recommend that we go with both of these companies. That way, we will have some different options for, you know, YVETI will naturally be our first choice, as usual. But a lot of times, I know the conflict of getting someone here or there is challenging for them. So that is what we would like to propose, is to go with both of these companies. I did reach out to the Capital Transit this morning, and he said that they have an office in Charlottesville, Virginia, which is a little closer to us, and that is where they'll be dispatching out of to the companies. They assured us that they would subcontract, I hope.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Just a quick question now.
Yes.
Glenda, were you able to do references on these two companies?
I did on the one from Madison. I got some great response there. The one from California, I have reached out to. He gave me numerous references. They do not have any in North Carolina or Virginia. And the ones I've reached out to, I have not got any response back. I've sent email and called, but I haven't received any, any response. They've been very timely on answering all the questions that Stacy and Vicky and I had. They've been on that line, but I have not received any response on any references from them. I will keep trying.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Morse? Glenda, what's the process for doing background checks for drivers that operate these kind of companies? Do you guys have to do that, or does it fall under some other?
I think Stacy and I, from the state standpoint.
We have to monitor these companies once a year. And that's part of it, is looking at the criminal records for the drivers.
Okay. Are you down, Commissioner Morse? Yeah, I think so. Is there any, I mean, is there any unusual, who actually, are you the only one that regulates some of the counties, the only one that does rate? Or is there somebody like at the state that regulates these transportation companies? Like, is somebody within DOT or anything?
Not that I know of. It would just be what, the Medicaid rules or the county rules. We do require them to provide the insurance qualifications. We require all that information. But to my knowledge, just, you know, county regulations or anything through the state that Stacy and I would require.
Okay. It's a little startup company. Has he been in business for a while? I didn't notice in the thing. I probably may have said that.
I'm not sure. I think he has been for at least a year. And like I said, I think just by talking with him and talking to the references that he had given, I do think he's, he has also been in contact, I think, with J.D. Cruz. He said that's who kind of referred him to talk to us.
Oh, okay, good. That's good.
So, and he, he does seem like that he would do a great job, but he's just one person. I just don't know he could fill our needs of it all.
Maybe he will grow.
Yeah, and that's his plan, about what he had submitted. His plan is to hopefully be able to grow.
Get another budget.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Walker?
Thanks, sir. Glenda, it seems like you're working hard to.
I work really hard, but I just can't get anybody.
I really wish we had another Stokes County person.
Yeah.
Interested in doing this. It seems like these fees, we could do pretty well with that fee structure, far as bottom line. One thing coming up, and I don't know, well, let me ask another question first, sorry. YVETI, have you talked with them about expanding their services? Was there any interest in their part in picking up some of what J.D. Cruz had been doing? And maybe taking some of the loan?
My understanding, when we did before, he, you know, seemed to think that they could handle it. But Stacy and Vicky wanted to make sure that we would have some different options if they can't. That was my understanding. Is that correct?
So, may I ask this, then? When will we know the level of YVETI's interest in attempting to handle what J.D. Cruz has been doing?
J.D. Cruz, they're ceasing operations September 30th. So I would say after that, I mean, we don't know.
Can I say something? Jeff, Jeff assured us from YVETI that they would meet our needs. I'm very skeptical about that, but that's what we were told.
We need to find a way to hold him to it, don't we?
And, and, you know.
Say, Jeff, if you see it, now you need to do it.
And it's up to you all whether, you know, we want to proceed on or wait, or that, you know, we're kind of, after that 30th, we have no other transportation contracts other than YVETI.
The fees I'm seeing from the one company, the company in California, seem high. How do they compare to YVETI's current fee structure?
It was pretty compatible. Actually, we actually negotiated, and they lowered some. So they were actually pretty compatible with J.D. Cruz and with YVETI's fees. And the other gentleman was actually lower.
And I would hope if YVETI does end up being able to handle at least some more business, that they would benefit from the economy of scale. And by doing more in the same area, it could actually reduce some of their operating costs per trip.
Right.
So I hope some of that might come into play. But if we commit to them or any other provider, we have to count on them being able to do what they tell us they can do and will do. But that needs to be understood going into the bargaining process.
Yeah, and both of these companies know that YVETI is such as our primary, and then they are secondary to, you know, if YVETI can't transport, then we would go to the next ones to, who we can transport at that time.
I almost would like to have, I think Jeff Whitaker's the transportation for YVETI. I would almost like to have him at one of our meetings before we push the button and finalize this. I think some dialogue with him might be beneficial.
I said to you.
Jeff Cockrum.
Jeff Cockrum, what's his name? Last name? Cockrum?
Cockrum. I would beg you to go ahead and act at next meeting. And the only reason for that is because September 30th is going to be here before you know it. And we're going to be stuck with a problem that we cannot afford to have.
Should we have him here at our next meeting?
That is our next meeting, the 23rd.
I mean, have the YVETI person here at our next meeting and have this on the action agenda?
Well, we could also, Mr. Walker, Commissioner Walker, we could have him here. It could be placed on discussion and moved to action at that meeting if they have to have it by 30th.
There is a sense of urgency, obviously. This is, our next meeting is the 23rd, that's one week before the 30th.
Yeah, and that's one reason why I put it off, because I tried to run it. I started in August, the end of July, putting out the RFP. And so I got the first round. I only received two. So I put it back out again, and then I received three. And then the day of the closing, the lady, she was out of Forsyth County. She pulled hers out, said she did not want to participate. So, yeah.
Well, as we understand, YVETI will be the primary transportation vendor. It's just a backup plan that they can't handle. So there's really not much else.
My understanding, once somebody has somebody that's like, in their office, needs to be transported right then. YVETI only takes some till two, is three.
They sort of become a little more lenient with that, because they tell them they have to.
Right. But there is a cutoff for them. So that is one reason why we thought the gentleman that was just a local startup company, that he might get help with some of those more spur-of-the-moment, you know, one day, that morning's any transportation, that afternoon.
Commissioner Yance and I are both on the YVETI board. I've been on it a good while now, and he's joined us on that board. And I have talked with Jeff Cockrum, it's been a while, and asked him the question we're discussing here this evening, "How much can you do?" And he said, "We think we can handle whatever we need, whatever you need for us to handle." But I'm like Stacy to some degree. I want to know before we get right up to the edge of the cliff that we have this worked out, and we know what's going to happen, and we don't get any adverse surprises. So I really want to have a conversation with Jeff and this board. And preliminary with you and Stacy to work out whatever details you can, or Jake, or whoever needs to be involved, so we can get things lined up to the greatest extent possible before this deadline comes. Because this is pretty doggone close.
Yeah, it is.
And may I ask Stacy a question?
Yes, sir.
Stacy, there's some changes coming up with Medicaid, I believe, in transportation?
Yes, sir.
What effect, I know some of these agencies are going to be doing their own transportation? Are some sort of new paradigm, new procedure? How much effect, if any, and what will it be when that happens?
There's going to be a transportation broker. And the folks who have to go on the Medicaid, the plans that Medicaid has set aside, they're going to get their, all their medical met, as well as their transportation, through whichever four companies they choose from. Those four companies are going to have to contract with transportation providers to provide their transportation to their medical. So it's on these four providers to find transportation providers to provide this transportation. So while our transportation roles will decrease some, because some people will go on to these other programs, they won't all go away, because there's a lot of people that'll stay in the regular plan.
But it could make some difference, is what I seem to hear you say.
It could make a little difference, but I, I know Jeff at YVETI has already talked to the transportation brokers, so he should be well on his way to getting ready for that.
Very good. Pretty important decision, something we need to get worked out, and get it worked out quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jane, do you have something you want to add? Mr. Chairman and board members, I'd like you to consider that this is a bid opening for two companies here, that is placing a bid here. And YVETI really does not have anything to do with this type of procedures she's taking care of. So I don't know, Tom May can speak on some more on the legalities of it. But I think something you need to make a decision to move forward with what she's presenting here on what was the bid was done, on these two bids. And then if you want to bring YVETI in to talk to you more about this at the next board meeting, that would be A-OK for you to do that. But I think you need to act on what she is presenting here.
Well, YVETI, yes, sir.
I see it this way. What YVETI can do and is willing to do, and is appropriate for them to do, has a bearing on how much work will be available for these folks. Because if YVETI takes a bigger chunk, there's less left for these two providers. And so I think it all fits together, and that's why I want to cover as many bases as we can prior to September 30th, because that's a firm date from all. I'm understanding there's no flexibility there. I don't think J.D. Cruz has offered to extend the date or anything. So we have to do whatever we're going to do prior to that date. And it's really important for me, particularly with the history with YVETI, et cetera, that we, I understand, information I need to make a decision. How much can they do? And how much are they willing to do? And how much will be left for the company in California and in Madison?
And can I say one more thing? If decision is not made, and we don't go this route, and we just stay with YVETI, come October 1st, DSS employees, county employees, we'll probably call y'all to ask to help us transport folks, because that is something we have to do.
Oh, yeah.
So, just.
When do we need to do action on this?
Yeah. I was trying to find.
Next meeting, next meeting.
And these companies know that YVETI is our number one. They know that they're not going to get a certain amount of business.
Right. And that's what I told them. They're not guaranteed. Right, we've not guaranteed them, we've not guaranteed on one mile, or any mile.
You haven't guaranteed a transport.
Yeah.
Flexible, but it really.
Yeah, yeah, because they realize that YVETI is primary. They are secondary to anything. If YVETI can transport, they're not going to be called. And that was one of the things the gentleman said, you know, if need be, the gentleman out of California, out of California, they're willing to open an office in King. Well, I can't ask him to open an office in King, cause I can't guarantee him one mile.
Right.
You know, but if he feels necessary when that time comes. They did ask for the mileage that J.D. Cruz had been providing, and I provided it, I thought I had it with me and I still got it in my office. Um, I provided that information, the miles, you know, within like a six month. Do you remember exactly what that was, Stacy? I don't either, right off the top of my head. But I gave them the mileage that J.D. Cruz was providing us. So, you know, that way they would have a, a range. That was a question that was asked during the RFP process, you know, what that was done. And I put this out on the state website because we have to follow the, um, uniform guidance procedures now for anything that federal money, grant money, and everything is done. So, I'm pretty positive that's where this company found that out, because that's where a lot of your outside companies go to, to get, to do RFPs, is through the state and the hub websites.
Mr. Chairman, I just kinda re-kept for, mainly from my clarity of my understanding, what, where we are. It seems like we found two companies that can provide the service we need.
Backup, yeah.
Yes.
As backup or blended, blended with YVETI and the service they offer. And, and you're comfortable, I'm understanding, with both of these companies having dealt with them, even though once a long ways off.
Right.
You're getting a pretty good feeling about how they're willing to do business with.
Yes, um, like I said, they, he has been very prompt. Um, Cindy Joyce that works with Stacy, she actually had a few questions that I couldn't answer from the Medicaid side. I gave her the information, he responded quickly to her, gave her everything she needed. He did have a North Carolina number through them. So, everything that we've asked him to provide, he, they have, the company has provided.
And, and I believe you said also that the quote you have will fit within the budget for DSS and, and senior services.
Yes, yes. It was very, it was comparable with what we already pay.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Menon Hall.
I just suggest to you, Mr. Chairman, that we place YVETI on discussion at the next meeting and place, uh, general care and capital transit proposals on action.
I have one question about that.
Commissioner Morris.
If we do action at the next meeting, will then that give you guys time to have both of these companies operational by 1 October? There ought to be a week in between?
Mm-hmm. I have the contracts and everything ready to send to Ty for his review. I've already got them ready to send to him. Actually, I was gonna do that tomorrow.
But, but my question is, can they operate on 1 October or not if we wait till next two weeks from now to approve this? If you need them? And if, if they can't, then should we approve it tonight? I mean, I, what, what YVETI says is not gonna have anything to do with whether we approve or disapprove these guys, I don't think. I mean, I'm fine with waiting two weeks, but if, if it's.
It would help me if you didn't wait two weeks, but that's strictly up to y'all. I, I told them.
Yeah, my question is, are they gonna operate on 1 October or not, though?
And Glenn, I've gotta do.
Y'all know, or?
And oil, so it's not just your piece, I've gotta do.
Okay. If you can make it action tonight, um, that would be wonderful and give us time.
I'm actually more in favor of that, considering what the situation is here, how's the board feel about that?
I'm fine with it.
I'm okay with it.
Sounds like we don't have another realistic choice, right?
Sounds like.
It's a little edge with this that, that we don't have any time to spare.
Time frame here.
Almost in a position where we have to act on it.
That would assure us for sure that they can operate by the October 1, I would think.
If you feel comfortable with that, that these two companies are reliable, then I would suggest we put it on, move it to action tonight.
And, and may I add something to Sir? Mr. Menon Hall's suggestion. I think these are both, Ty, help me with this also, if you will, please. These, these are performance-based contracts. And if they don't perform at the level that's specified in the contract that they need to, then, then we no longer would have a contract with whoever that provider is. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Can you be sure that it's in there?
Sure. Also, just, you're not obligated.
Correct.
I, I didn't hear you.
You're not obligated under the agreement, correctly obligated by them, any.
Right.
Right.
YVETI.
Good observation. I think Commissioner Morris alluded to that earlier as well.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Good, good. And, Mr. Chairman, is there anything else, uh, while we're talking about the contract? Do we, any other commissioner have anything that needs to be added to the contract?
Commissioner Morris, shout to Menon Hall. You go good with everything? All right, we'll move it on to the action agenda as item H.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Is the board fine with just a five-minute break before we move on to our next item? Take a five-minute recess. I got it. Yeah, I got it. Stop making it funny.
Hold on, Jim.
I got it, Jim.
Yeah.
Got them meeting back to order. Team one will have our discussion agenda, I M D, the emergency watershed project, and we have Commissioner Morris on that.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just to give everybody a little background on this, about, I think it's about three months ago, three or four months ago, I was contacted by the owner of Riverview Golf Course, because I play down there, so actually I ran into him while I was down there playing. And he'd been working with the Resource Institute and an environmental company, try to address some damage from the hurricanes that are, I think, are referenced in this letter. And I think that program he was trying to, they were trying to do required a match, which he wasn't sure if he could do or not, because he'd already spent a ton of money cleaning up the golf course from the hurricanes. I think he had two feet of sand he had to remove from the total golf course, plus some other things. So he had significant investment doing that. But anyway, they were going to pursue it, but that, for whatever reason, didn't, I don't think, panned out. And then, and then, so then this other thing came up, so I called the Resource Institute on this one. And this letter, as I understand it, and Jake, I don't know if you've had a discussion, see if you heard the same thing, but this letter is a, when you send it to the federal government, there's a chance they will do seventy-five percent of the repair. And, and then it requires a twenty-five percent match. Well, he told me the purpose of this letter is basically just to get the feds to take a look at it and see if the project would meet their requirements for funding, which I think there's a high probability it will, because it's for disaster funding and hurricanes and tornadoes and things. And he said if, if they got the feds to approve it with the seventy-five percent, he thought he could get the state to pay the other twenty-five percent. I guess you would call it a match or whatever, either in kind or dollar match. So as I understand it, the purpose of this letter is just to get the project evaluated. He said, and, and you know, it's like all these grants that we have, or a lot of grants that we have that are these types of things. The county, they need somebody like the county to sponsor it in order to be able to apply for it and everything. So that's why I think the request is here. And also, he said that we could decide not to, you know, not to back out or stop any time we wanted to. We're not committing to anything by sending the letter forward. So that's my explanation or my understanding of what's going on with it. The, the golf course has really, really got a lot of damage from this. I think it's about a half a million dollar estimate, probably going to be to fix it. These, if you're familiar with pine holes, it's one of only three we've gotten in county. So if you're familiar with the course, it's got three holes that go right beside the river. And, and what's happened is it's washed out into the fairways and the tee boxes on those three holes. So if he's not able to do something to get it under control, I, I would imagine that eventually those holes may completely get washed away or maybe become unplayable or have to be redesigned or something. So, and my approach, I guess, to this is that any time that the county can help one of our business owners get access to disaster-type funding from FEMA or anybody else that's caused by natural disasters, we ought to, you know, try to partner with them and help them do that, as long as we're not committing any local taxpayer funding to the matches or anything. Give the business owners an opportunity to do matches if they're required or whatever. But I don't think I can envision one where I would use county money to do any kind of a match for it. But, but if we could get the state and the feds to do this, then that would be a good thing for the golf course. And we'd keep three golf courses in the county. So, that your understanding, Jake, kind of what it is doing?
My understanding was that the state would be stepping in and paying the twenty-five percent match funding. And, and I'm like Commissioner Morris, anytime we can get any kind of federal or grant money that will come in and help our, help Stokes County, I'm all, I'm all for it, just that as long as I got Ty saying that everything looks good on the agreement and moving forward with it, I'll be ready to sign a letter and send it out right away.
I think probably we'd want it, well, as soon as the feds evaluate it and either approve it or disapprove it, we'd need to come back to the board and let us know what happened, what's going to happen next after that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anybody's having any comments or questions? Commissioner Walker?
I'm looking at the letter, and I'm a little bit confused on what I'm seeing. Letters to Mr. Beard, State Council, Constellationist. And there's a sentence down toward the end of the letter that says, and this letter was signed by Jake, says, "We are also prepared to provide not less than twenty-five percent of the cost of construction work in dollars or in kind services." Now, that sounds like county funds. So you're saying that there'd be, and Commissioner Morris, I think, was saying there was likely to be no county funds, but that reads like there could be up to twenty-five percent.
There would be twenty-five percent of funding that would come if we were eligible for the seventy-five percent grant from the state. Once they determine that, then we, then they would either have to fly by to the state for this funding, or I'm assuming the county would have to come up with it.
And then we wouldn't do it, so it'd be over with at that point?
Right.
If the state didn't do it?
The state would have to do it, and you would have to approve in an amount that, that if a state did not come across with the twenty-five percent matching grant funding, then as Commissioner Morris said, it would be over.
Now, this, this doesn't seem to be worded that way.
As I come out, seen it to Ty.
How did you see what I'm referring to?
I pointed out that it stated that the county was provided for about a twenty-five percent of the funding. And I also, I'm Charles Anderson, doubt it. And he pointed out correctly that you would not be legally obligated to provide that funding, or you would be legally obligated to, you'd have to sign the contract. But you are stating that you are prepared to provide that.
And that raises a question too, and I, I'm like Commissioner Morris said, want to see as many businesses as possible, get as much grant funding as possible. But if we're going to pay twenty-five percent, I can see a line forming of businesses saying, "Me too. I've had adverse circumstances this way or that way." And if you're going to fund one twenty-five percent, where is mine? I've been asked that question.
I don't have any intention of funding twenty-five percent.
I've been asked that question by some pretty significant businesses here in our county a few times, when we would do sort of something similar to this. But how can we incorporate, or how can we bind ourselves as a board to not continuing with this if it does amount to putting twenty-five percent of county money into it? Now, here, Commissioner Morris saying he's not on board in doing that. I'm, I'm not on board, and although, or not, he says, "I'd really like to do it." I think we have to look at precedents, always looking, what kind of precedent are we setting? And, and I, I would be very cautious about the county's, you know, what kind of coming from county taxpayers.
The county would not be legally bound by any type of capacity. If the federal funding approved seventy-five percent, then it would have to be the contract signed in the county before you'd be legally bound. But I understand here, it's given the perception of the county limits on. That's, yeah, it looks bad if the seventy-five percent funding comes through. And I know the plan is to get twenty-five percent funding from the state. But that doesn't happen, then you're faced with the prospect of, we represented that we were provided up to twenty-five percent of funding, but since you say, "Well, we're not going to do it for our funds," it's bad.
It's confusing.
Yeah, that, that's the only issue that I had, was the representation that you are, the county is providing for, prepared for five of twenty-five percent. It's the way the others, so hopefully you can get it from other sources, but it's not.
That's not, about what if we say, what's the definition of "we"?
Can I?
Commissioner Yance?
I mean, we could be like a landowner, the state, or whoever.
A person with a mouse in their pocket.
We're writing this, we're writing this letter as a sponsor, right? So we're writing it as "we," we, the county, and the, the business owner. So if, if the business owner is also listed as, in addition, and signs at the bottom, their commitment is the twenty-five percent, if, if there's any commitment of twenty-five percent. I mean, that's the way I look at it, to clarify this. When I read this, it says "we," and when I look at "we," to Commissioner Morris's point, we are the county along with the business owner. I in no way, I'll clarify really quickly, would support the county spending any county funds to cover that twenty-five percent. But when you throw in-kind services in there, that throws a whole different dimension of what he could possibly do as a business owner to match that twenty-five percent. So that would be my suggestion, is if it's okay to word it this such, as a sponsor, that, you know, I don't know why we couldn't list who we're sponsoring, and then that forms the "we," so to speak, to your point.
Commissioner Morris, when is the deadline, just see about the federal funding on this? When does it have to be turned in by?
I don't actually know. I think it's pretty quick though.
I talked to Charles Anderson, he was saying that it was late. End, end of September, first of October, they were, something that wouldn't need to be applied for with the federal side of it. Okay. If, if something that wouldn't, couldn't sit around waiting.
May I ask a question, Commissioner? What is his involvement? Is he just a resource person, or is this something that'd be run through his agency or pilot view?
I'm assuming you, everything that goes through his, his business, towards the grant and, and him looking after this whole project. Because he's heading up, he's overseeing this right here.
I don't see him mentioning his letters to Mr. Beard, and you signed it.
I've not signed any, no.
Well, it says Jake Oakley.
I think my understanding of, of reading it was that this was.
Oh, I was just looking, I'm sorry, but I was just looking at the bottom of the letter, and it says Jake Oakley, county manager.
You went ahead and typed up a letter for me to sign to send in, saying that we would, that Stokes County is interested in sponsoring this application for grant services through the federal side of it.
This is just what the letter would look like, nothing has been signed or sent.
This is not an official letter that's written, put in?
This is what it would look like.
I think he's working with, there is Resource Institute and also an environmental company. I forget if it was North State or some environmental company they're working on.
A lot more I'd like to know before I can get on board, a lot.
Commissioner Morris, were you proposing with this?
I'm going to put on action for next time and answer Commissioner Walker's questions between now and then, if that'll meet the requirement. I assume the way the letter's worded, if you don't word it this way, they, the feds probably won't come and look at it. I, that would be my guess, is why it's worded the way it is. But I think it's got plenty of wiggle room in it with discussion from Commissioner Yance.
I would prefer Ty Browder rewriting this, in a manner that it would protect the county a little more.
Yeah, I don't know how much legal we have to work with by any time.
Did you call Charles and just ask, is that one sentence the one you got the most problem with?
Of course.
And just redo that one sentence?
That's one thing, and, and I just, you're getting more disclosure. I, I'm not comfortable with pilot view based on some previous projects.
Well, who's going to get the money if they don't?
We.
Who, who specifically?
I think we, I think we have the ability to, to.
Well, I'm fine if the government, if our county wants to take over and do this instead of pilot view.
I'm not used to being hit with things just out of look like this, and all of a sudden we find it more and more that raises questions instead of providing answers. That sentence right there is major to me, because I hear commissioners saying, "I'm not going to do it if, if it involves county money." And then we get this person's business owner's hopes up, and I'd really like to be able to help them. I'd like to see them get some help. I'd like to see them continue to operate their business. But I'm looking at a letter, a draft of a letter, that puts the county on the hood for twenty-five percent of the funds.
Why don't we have them, see if you can rewrite that sentence and still get the feds to come and look at it?
Yeah, if it's all, all grant money, that, that eases some of my concerns.
I think we need to set a precedent for helping our businesses, if there's external money available to help them when, when we have disasters.
Of course, who wouldn't?
Yeah, exactly. So these guys are, you know, these guys are coming in and trying to get this done. I haven't seen anybody else trying to get it done, so.
Any more questions or comments? Commissioner Manon, give me that.
Well, I just, I'm, I'm looking at my attorney right here on the legal aspect of this. And I just want to make sure on the interpretation of "we," you know, are we going to get, we as the county, and, you know, and you're our attorney. So I'm looking at you, Ty, to make sure that that's this thing through, that we, five commissioners are not held. You understand what I'm saying?
You're making the representation on that.
Exactly.
That you, that you are prepared.
Yes, sir.
To provide that.
And that's why I want to know.
Of course, I know the intent is to get statements to make up twenty-five percent, or from some sources, others, they can't fund. I will find out whether or not we're providing those letters.
Well, I mean, it's, right. Like, because it's amazing, yeah, it's amazing that a word with two letters in it can mean something.
I don't know that that's going to work. I think it's going to work, but it's going to be looking to a unconditional.
Black or white.
Representation that you will be responsible for our process.
And, and I'm not seeing this quite, no, no offense, Commissioner Yance, but I'm not seeing it as the business owner and the county, because if this goes out with our county manager's name on it and not the business owner's as well for that twenty-five percent, this says twenty-five percent, and then this says our county manager's.
And I'm not going to take offense to it, because I said we would add him as a business owner to the letter.
Yeah, that might be another approach.
We would add him on as a signature at the bottom of the letter, not that, I agree the way it reads now. That's the reason I asked if we could add him on as a business owner.
Okay. We can, Mr. Browder, rewrite this letter if possible, bring it back in a couple of weeks. Y'all want to put on discussion agenda, and then y'all ready to move forward?
I'd say discussion, and we can move it to action if, if, if all the i's are not and t's are crossed at the next meeting.
I'll be fine, I want to do that now.
Good with that.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to our last item in the discussion agenda, the sales tax referendum, and have Mr. Oakley on that.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is something that has been discussed previously in, in, in our planning sessions and, and our board meetings, budget meetings. And I was just needing some guidance on how you want to move forward with this, even if you do want to move forward. This is the sale, a sales tax referendum that would be placed on a ballot for the voters to approve. I am hearing from the Board of Elections that if we are to move forward with such a referendum on, on the ballot, that it needed to be moved quickly if it is to be placed on the primary election, which will be in March. If that happens, then I would, we would need to have the resolutions and ordinances and, and all the legality signed and proved and done, and the verbiage set aside and done right, send into the state on how the, how this ballot is going to, going to look for people to vote on. And it would have to be sent into the state by December the twentieth. If it's to be on the primary ballot of March of 2020. If it is going to be on the general election, then obviously we'll have more time to consider and talk and discuss this matter. But, and that would probably, would have to come on up in sometime around June, July, after some discussion I had with Jason Perry, our, our elections coordinator. But you, you see in your stack of papers, and I gave you some, some information that was concerning the previous sales tax referendum that you had on, on a ballot that did not pass. And there's a ordinance there, the dates and stuff that would need to be changed and, and approved. And Ty sent that to us, because I've been talking with him concerning what needed to be done. And then, and you'll also see the, the actual law or statute that gives you the right to move forward with requesting this to be placed in front of the voters to, to vote on. So if you're interested in this, and you feel like it's something that you want to put in front of the voters to make a decision on, then we need to know now whether you want to go with the primary election or you want to go with a general timeframe, general election timeframe. And that's what I'm asking now, is what voting period time would you like to go with if you're interested in this? Like I said, we got many more meetings with you guys if we're going to plan on going with the primary.
Well, I'll just probably just pull the board, start down at Commissioner Morris, and yes and no on going forward with it, and then would you want to go in the primary of my election?
Yes, I would like to go forward with it. I want to discuss it a little bit about exactly what it is, but, and I don't know which election. I want to go with the one that it stands the highest probability of being approved. And to be honest with you, I don't know which one that is, so I'd be interested in somebody else's knowledge or opinion on that if, if you have one.
Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, sir. I agree with Commissioner Morris's observation about, I'd like some more discussion. What, what, what actually are we doing here? I mean, we, we have failed dismally with, with one attempt at this. It sort of crashed and burned, and I think it has to be looked at. What have we learned from our previous attempt that didn't work? And what can we do to make our citizens comfortable enough with what we're hoping to do so that they'll support it? I think in talking with Rockingham County, I think they specifically said that the quarter sales tax would be used for education, for schools. May I ask our superintendent if he, if there has any knowledge of that? Are you aware of how Rockingham County positions theirs? Because theirs passed.
I'm not familiar with theirs specifically, but I've seen it passed in the past. There were very specific things that were put out that this tax would go for.
Right.
And so if it had a purpose that, a clearly defined purpose, I've seen it passed before, but I'm not, I'd be happy to reach out to Rockingham and ask them, but I'm not familiar with it.
I, I think it was schools. I, my memory is failing me more often than I'd almost like to admit, but, but I believe it was for the schools, and it passed. Our first attempt at doing this, we didn't have any specific purpose, did we, that I can recall?
I don't remember, but I know that there was C-Roll marketing done.
Yeah, it was just sort of tossed out there and.
Everybody saw it the first time at the bottom of the list.
No real rallying to get support for it, and, and it almost was doomed from the beginning on that basis. So I'd like to have more discussion before we lock things in on what, what can we use these funds for if this was passed that would best fit the needs and wants of our citizens? And if it's schools, then we, we use it for that purpose. If there's some other need or want out there that's really significant and our citizens are willing to support that, we need to identify that. But I'm, I'm on board, I, I think it's what, this type tax is the opposite of property tax. Property tax is one of the most regressive forms of taxation there is. It, it taxes people who don't, you know, if, some folks are trying to save their farm, for example, and then property tax, that type thing, can make a big difference. This is a consumption tax, as I understand it. If you buy, you pay. And so it's a fairer tax than, than most other forms. And on that basis, I'm certainly willing to take a look at it and give it a shot. I know no one in today's times, and I tell, every now and then somebody, but most people say they don't want their taxes increased. You've, you've heard that, you guys that were out campaigning most recently, I'm sure you heard that. However, this type tax being a fairer tax, hopefully would keep other taxes, property taxes, for example, from being increased as much. So I, I think there's, it's certainly worth looking at. And I, again, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Morris a lot this evening, almost surprised me. But I think his, his observation of, if we're going to do it, we need to do it with the intent of getting it to work. We don't need to just put it on a ballot and say, "There it is," because that's, we've already found out that doesn't work. So if it's a school tax, not school tax, if it's a tax that will. So if it's a school tax, not school tax, if it's a tax that will answer education here in our county, be used for school purposes, are the school folks willing to work to help to get this to pass?
Yes, sir.
Do you mobilize?
I believe our board said that.
So anyhow, I'm, I'm willing to take a good, close look at it, hopefully come up with a way that it could work, be fair to our citizens, all involved as much as possible, and proceed on that basis.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Yance?
Yes, I would support putting it on the ballot. And, and the reason being is, you know, we, we had this discussion, so when we asked where we're at on this, well, where we're at is we talked about it during our budget. And with the whole harmless funding kind of going away and things like that, it's put, it's put kind of a squeeze in what we had talked about. Now, I'm not saying that this is issue and stone, but we had talked about school safety and security, those two items specifically. I agree that we do need to talk about it a little bit more going forward, but the more complexity that we put into it, the more confusion you put into it, and the more that people are going to be reluctant to, to vote for it or however. I think it needs to be very simple. It's safety and security or whatever it is, and to spell that out, those two words, and be done with it and put it out there. These are the only two things that it's going to be put out for. Again, the complexity of it, I think if we start mining in real deep on it, it's just going to be overwhelming to people and people are not going to understand what you're trying to sell to them or what you're trying to pitch, the pitch you're trying to make.
Very clear and transparent.
Very much so. So I'm okay with it.
Primary or general?
Honestly, I could go either way. I would prefer the primary, and the reason I say I'd prefer the primary is because when we're laying out our budget, it's going to be critical whether we know if that's there or not, I feel like. But I also would be okay with doing the general because I think it's a better, there's going to be more participation. So obviously, you're going to get a better read on what the citizens of Stokes County truly want.
Okay.
So I can go either way on that.
Commissioner Walker, did you say primary or general?
I said which one stands the best chance of passing, but we probably can't really figure that out, so I'll just go with whatever the rest of the board wants to do. I would also agree with Commissioner Yance, though. Security and school safety are the two things that we talked about, and I think it should be that. And even though it's redundant, I would also add SROs in there because everybody knows what SRO is. So, so even though that's part of security, just so they know that we're going to pay for those guys out of it as well.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Commissioner Walker, did you say?
I'll say primary, and I'll share my insight with you if I may. Also, I think I agree with Commissioner Yance, if we try to make it too detailed, too pinned down, then it becomes more complicated and, and folks have to think more about do they really support all that's in it or not. So if we can keep it clear, transparent, and simple, that might, might be a good approach. Now, far as primary or general, definitely primary. Here's why. Primary turnout is going to be much lower than general. People who come and vote in a general election, they're not, they're not as, generally speaking, I don't think they're as informed. They're coming to do their civic duty and, and they're going to vote and they see a tax increase there, a new tax, they, they're not going to have the data to help them make a good decision. So I say definitely primary because if you get the school people out working and get some other folks out who, who are knowledgeable and will get out and work and promote this, much better chance of passing than a primary because it's a more limited turnout.
All right. Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Walker, answer your question, so I can go to the Rockingham County, done the quarter cent sales tax for economic, like workforce. So, yeah, that's what that was on it for.
I was confused, man. I need some memory, man. Memory proven pills.
It's in the primaries.
Just, I'm going to go back to that because remember vividly when it was on the ballot and it failed miserably the last time it was on there. So I'm going to give you about seven or eight quick items here that we need to remember as we go into this, if we're, if we're going to do this. One, as Commissioner Morris stated in the beginning, and then Commissioner Yance, I think almost everybody said this, I want to tell you upfront, there, there was no marketing on this at all. None. I'd say 75 to 80% of the people in the county had no idea that it was even going to be on the ballot when they walked in to vote that day. Didn't even know it was going to be on the ballot. But that tells you right there that the word did not get out to the citizens that voted. They had no idea. Second thing is anytime the word tax is on anything, if they don't know exactly what it's for and they see tax, and the first thing that comes to their, to their mind is a tax increase. And if they, if they think it's got anything to do with a tax increase, they're voting no. That's why, that's one of the reasons. I think it was like 82% to 18% failure rate. I don't have the exact numbers. I'd have to go back to Jason and ask the exact numbers, but it just, it was really a big blow. And, and like I say, third, they, the citizens didn't understand. Many of them didn't understand what they were voting for. Had no idea when they walked into that door. So lack of, lack of marketing. And I'm going to tell you, you're talking about a turnout now. That was 2016 general election. And if everybody remembers, 2016 general election was presidential election. And Stokes County had a huge turnout of voters in that election. But as I said, the failure came as to they were not made aware of what this is and what, what, what's it going to benefit? Now, we've heard tonight, school safety and things of that nature, but they had no idea going in. And, and I think it's just a lack of failure of communication on our part that we didn't get the word out as to, well, what's, how's it going to help the county? How is it going to help Stokes County? And I'm going to tell you, we all know that if this is going to affect all the citizens in this county, it's going to affect all the citizens in this county, it needs to be held in the general election. You want to know why? Because I'm going to tell you. You look at the amount of people that comes out and votes in the primary, and you compare that to the number of people that's going to roll out in November with the presidential election up this year. And everybody knows that right now, nobody can look in that and tell you that it's not going to be a big turnout come November. It is. And there's going to be a many, probably three or four times the number of people voting in November that will vote in March. So I just want to remind everybody, I don't think anybody can, everything I just told you to me was what helped defeat this so badly last time. Everything I listed. I would say that if we're going to make an effort, people need to know that exactly, exactly what this is for, what's going to be gained by it, who's going to benefit, how is it going to benefit the county? And we're going to, and it's going to be up to the people that it's going to benefit to get the word out. And so, Mr. Chairman, I just, I hope I enlightened everybody that's here or in here that I know that because, you know, I worked a poll that day, all day long, and it was unbelievable and them people had walked out of that voting poll. They had no idea. They came and asked me, what, what, what was I voting on, on that tax referendum? What was I voting on? They had not been made aware of. Did not. I just think we need to remember all those things we go through this because if you want a chance for approval, you know, people, people want to know what they're voting for. They want to know. And if they see that word tax, they really want to know. I mean, that right there is going to perk them up and they're going, they're going to say, are we having a tax increase? The word has got to be got out. So I mean, if you want to really involve everybody in Stokes County in this, you need, I mean, I've heard from commissioner, all the commissioners, and the primary vote is usually pretty low. You have to really have something special on that to get people out. But there's something that's going to draw people out in November. I tell you, it's going to draw people out. And that's, that's the vote for the president. Those people are not, people have a strong feeling one way or the other about who they want to be the next president of the United States, and they're going to roll out and they're going to vote in Stokes County. So that's about all I have to say.
Yes, sir.
In fairness to the situation, I appreciate the thought that Commissioner Rennheim was offering. I know he's doing it very sincerely and I respect that. But in fairness to the situation, could we find out for the counties that have been able to get this to pass, were, were those, how many were in the primary versus how many were in the general?
We can do that.
That would be useful information.
It would be.
And as I was trying to convey there, I was just saying how many people altogether will be voting.
It'll be, it'll be a huge difference.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Just real quick, I do remember we was talking about this during the budget session and I'll say I was one of the ones in 2016 who voted no for it. I didn't know what it was. I went in to vote for our president there and seeing that, and anytime you seen a tax about what's going on, well, nobody wants to pay more taxes, of course. However, if it had gotten through, I don't believe we'd be sitting at where we're sitting at right now with some of our schools. Everybody's seen, some people looked at their taxes this year and thought, oh, I'm paying more taxes for the school, and that's not actually what happened at all. Still paying the same amount of taxes, it's just we gave a little bit more percentage to the school, and it was well needed. So I do remember the discussion about us having it for safety and security. I do want to see it going there for that part right there. And to be truthful, I'd rather see paying a little bit more sales tax than we're paying, paying property tax. I don't know how y'all feel about it, but you got people coming through this county that stop in the stores and everything else, paying a part of it. And then there's also the other fact of some people getting paid under the table, they're paying taxes that way. So, you know, I kind of look at it as that part, everybody's paying a fair share on it, and it's not completely dependent on the actual citizen in the county there. So I don't see how you can get any fairer than that. So.
But I do want to say this. You said you voted which way?
No.
Voted against.
Correct.
Why did you vote against?
Because I didn't know what it was for. I just thought it was another tax increase I was going to have to pay, so.
That's what I was trying to get on.
With this, if I actually make my decision on the primary general, I'd like to push this off the next meeting. Is there any way y'all can get us information on what the result was '22? I'd like to push it off the next meeting if everybody's good with that. Fraktion, you mean? Fraktion, yeah. Commissioner Yance, Rennheim?
I'm fine.
Okay. You guys all made good arguments for the primary, though, so I'm already converted.
This is the primary, that's, that's what we're getting at, is a timeframe that we've got to work in here.
Exactly.
To make sure that you've got the resolutions and the referendums done, and you've got your verbiage right, and you're, and you're ready to start.
And I was going to say, and how much time have you got?
Well, all that's going to be turned into the state, and then by the time the, the actual, uh, prime, the actual vote takes place, you've got to be able to establish a plan of action of how you're going to promote it. And that's, that's, you've got a real short timeframe here that you've got to work in, so you've got to get busy if you want to pull it off.
Kind of stuck in one situation right now, you can't have your cake and egg too. I'd love to see it go on the primary ballot, just kind of what Commissioner Yance said, to see what we've got to work with this budget cycle. But then again, I don't want to rush this thing so fast that people don't know what it's going through, and here we're wasting time and money again to put it out there and it gets failed. So that's kind of where I'm sitting on the, between the primary and the general election.
I'm interested, Mr. Chairman, in what we need to do and when do we need to do it? For example, one of the decisions, and this one's, and these one, it's an either/or, is primary or general. The, the more complex, one of the more complex aspects of it may be, how are we going to promote this? What are we going to tell our citizens that we're going to do with additional funds if this passes? And I think that may take a little bit more work to refine that and get it in, in a way we can present it to our citizens and they say, you know, that, that seems reasonable. I can support that. We've got a little work to do, not that much time to do it in. We need to decide primary or general. That's pretty easy. That can be done quickly. When we, when do we need to make the other decision? That doesn't have to be when we put it on the ballot, does it? When would we need to decide? When would we need to decide how we're going to present this to our citizens? Exactly what these funds, should this pass, exactly what these funds would be used for?
It would need to be done by the, by mid-January?
We've got plenty of time for that then. So the basic decision we may today make now is are we going to do it, number one, in primary or general?
Well, we got the advertising part taken care of. Dr. Rice is going to sing a song about it on Facebook. That's going to go viral right there.
As he rides around and checks the roads, that'd be good.
You always can take advantage of what you're already sending out every month to everybody through these car tax bills, that you can put a notice inside these bills and it goes out to everybody that's renewing tax. And you start pushing that out as soon as possible. That'll catch, that'll probably catch four or five months of individuals that are, that's out there. With that, then you'll get talkage, if that's the proper way of saying, saying that, and you, and you promote it in many other ways that this is what you, what you're doing, what you're going to plan on using the board.
I have one last question. Don't the Board of Elections have to actually do this instead of us?
Yes. And they got.
Make sure they're on board and know what they're supposed to do.
It will be as long as they, you're ready to send them the information and, and ordinance and referendums by December 20th. That's why it's kind of pushing us on the primary side of it. Mr. General, we've got a little more time.
See December 20th, this is September 9th, September, October, November, post of December. Something to work with.
We have Jason or the Board of Elections will come and tell us more about this sometime.
Absolutely.
Get it from the horse's mouth.
I got an email from, it was forwarded from Kyle Hall that had a lot of the nuts and bolts information about it, what it would take to make it work.
Is everybody getting this pushed off the next meeting right there to finish the business? All right. We'll go ahead and move on to our action agenda. First off is the NC State Superintendent's, Superintendent's Need. This is a need-based public school capital fund grant that our fine school administration, Dr. Rice and Dr. Taylor.
Dr. Rice and Dr. Taylor, has been sitting very patiently to come up here and give them, give us a update on what they have got in plan and in store for going out for some more grants. And in, in this grant, there's something that's got to be done. I said, "Come, I'm going to request that this will be placed on the action agenda." Well, we need to approve this, I know the way.
It's on the action agenda.
It's on the action agenda, and, and let these guys have time to move forward with applying for this grant monies. It's for the West Stokes...
CTE building.
CTE building, and we've, our matching money is, we already done approved in the 18, 19 budgets. It's nothing we need to match, but we have.
We've already matched it, we're not asking for any new money.
There you go, so I'm going to let Dr. Rice take it.
Pretty much is asking to get more money, you're correct.
We're trying to get more money in here to build a building at half price, basically. That's the goal for this. But first of all, thank you for the opportunity to, to come to you tonight. And if I can, just take just a moment to thank you again for the school resource officers. As you probably know, last week, we had a threat at one of our schools where we ended up having to put three schools in lockdown. And thank you to Sheriff Marshall and his people, they had deputies all over the place, but we were able to put these other schools in lockdown with a radio call to the SROs that were in those buildings, armed officers in those other buildings. We didn't have to worry about what day it was, was it the right day of the week to lock some of these down, because they were all there already. And so, thank you for what you did in the summer that allowed that day to go with a little less stress, if you will, because knowing that those schools were all protected with an armed deputy was tremendous. And again, thank you to Sheriff Marshall for the response. Within minutes, there were, and I don't know the number, 20, 25, 30 people everywhere you looked, there was, every time you turned a corner, there were a couple of deputies there. So, thank them for their response, and thank you for investing in the safety and security of our schools. But tonight, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Taylor here in just a second. I know he's met most of y'all before the meeting, but he is our new Assistant Superintendent, and we have a grant opportunity that's with us for a school needs-based school capital fund grant. Again, the, the basis of this is that we can do a new construction, and we've already approved the, the building of the CTE building. We're behind schedule with that. The money we allocated at that time that you provided in the capital fund was about $325,000. We believe that with this taking an extra year, construction costs have gone up. So, this will take care of that and allow us to do some other projects, we believe, with the savings that we're having from that. And again, just want to stress, I know the tone of the meeting tonight, this is no new money for this grant, it's money that you've already invested in us, that's there waiting for us. It's just a way to get more from DPI to help us with this project. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I have actually written some of these before. Up until last year, Tier 1 counties in North Carolina could request up to $15 million in funding from the, the needs-based public school capital fund. Last year, the General Assembly included Tier 2 counties, which we are a Tier 2 county here in Stokes County. They are looking for, what I refer to as shovel-ready projects. This is a project at West Stokes that we have new drawings, we have advertised, we've had a pre-bid meeting, and we are scheduled to open bids on September the 19th. What we hope to do is submit an application with your signature, your approval, for $325,000. You, as a Tier 2 county, there's a one-to-one match, you have allocated up to $325,000 for this project, so we would request from the state $325,000 for a total of $650,000 for this project. We do apologize for the short turnaround. Last year, when I wrote this grant in another county I worked in, we got this grant application around April or May. This year, we literally received this application the last week of August, and it's due September the 13th. So, we apologize for the, the short timeframe, but we are trying our best to bring in any extra money we can. If you go back and look at my history, my experience, I'm all about stretching a dollar and pinching a penny. So, this will allow us, if we were able to get this extra money, and it did not cost $650,000, maybe we could take some of that original allocation and use for other projects that we have identified in our long-range capital plan. So, this is a win-win, we believe, for both the school system and the county, and we are respectfully asking that you approve this tonight, so we can sign this application. The application has basically been written, it is in draft form, we're waiting for signatures, and once you approve tonight, if you approve, we are prepared to share through Dr. Rice to our Board of Education and, and move forward with this grant application.
They have a copy of the grant and the budget on the computers.
Basically, what we're using as the need of this project, as most of you know, in our country right now, there is a, an issue of supply and demand with skilled labor. And we are proposing the new CTE classroom and shop will provide classroom space and experience for trade and industry, cabinetry, carpentry, et cetera. These are skills that young people can graduate high school with and either carry to the community college, or be employable right out of high school. So, the need is there, there's a benefit both to our students and potentially the , the community as well. So, there, I will be honest with you, the moment this is approved at this level, we will reach out to both Representative Hall and Senator Berger to make sure that they are aware that we have submitted a grant, so they can do anything they can to help us with this as well.
I see this as a win-win. But I just got one question.
Yes.
You say this right here is just at West Stokes?
For now, that's correct.
Okay, so in the future, y'all are looking to go ahead and...
What we would love to do is, if this stays in place, and with Dr. Rice's permission and the Board's permission, we would like to begin kind of being proactive with this and taking a look at projects. They like projects that are already, as I said, shovel-ready, that you're farther along in the process. It just so happens that with the West Stokes project, we are much farther along than most, any other project of this scope. It may be something in the future that we identify with you as a school system and a Board of County Commissioners, we could borrow, we could request up to $10 million if we chose to do so. So, if it, if we have this in time, we can be much more proactive instead of reactive and look at projects on our long-range capital plan.
Okay.
But yes, we would like to utilize this type of funding in the future, if that's something you're interested in us discussing with.
I know that had nothing to do with the grant, I just, I just want to make sure that if you're going to have one high school, we get through high school, let's make sure we have all the high schools at the same opportunity.
I understand.
Any more questions or comments?
No. Thanks for, you guys bringing this up to us. The, basically, you're just doing West Stokes because it's shovel-ready and others aren't, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, but, but then if there's leftover funds, you could look at the other schools for how those get spent as well, right? What's the probability of approval, if you think, you have any feel for that?
There's no way of knowing. The fact that Senator Berger is in his position is, is going to be positive. His leadership, Representative Hall, we feel confident that our representation in the General Assembly will work with us on this, on our behalf. But I have no way of knowing, it would be disingenuous for me to give you odds tonight, I'm not in the, in the odds making.
You had good success before with it, right?
Yes, and, I've written one that went through, and I wrote one last year for Avery County, and unfortunately, I was told when we did not get it in Avery County, that it basically boiled down to when the Senate redistricted, the gentleman that took over the Senate representation there in Avery County was not as high on the food chain, so to speak, as someone previously was, and it kind of, it got lost in the shuffle there. I will tell you, though, that there is money, the last allocation, if I'm not mistaken, is up to $75 million is available in the General Assembly, only for Tier 1 and Tier 2 counties.
One thing that's in our favor is the short turnaround, that we had a project ready with drawings and all of that in this turnaround time, where other people might not have that ready, but we do have that ready.
Okay, I'm all for it, it's a no-brainer, in my opinion. Any more?
Yes, sir.
I like the, I like that the money's already there. It's nice when I look and I see the budget line item, and there's the $325,000 where it needs to be to make this happen. Now, I'm almost embarrassed to ask this, I feel like my peers here know the answer, and I keep quite fit the pieces together. What is CTE?
Career and Technical Education. And education, we're full of hackneyons, and I apologize. This is career and technical education. Oh, vocational, a lot of people still refer to it as vocational education.
I like that.
This is career and technical education. This is primarily going to serve young people at West Stokes that are taking cabinetry, carpentry, et cetera. It'll be a classroom and a shop space that will be built on the backside of the existing building there at West Stokes High School.
Good, I thought I heard something about agriculture, too, today.
The agricultural program is currently housed in the building on campus. We're going to go on the backside. If this is the current building, this shop will come on the classroom, be on the back with the shop space.
So, basically, we're going to be sharing the back wall and adding two bed spaces.
Very good, I, I'm on board, and I wish you well, wish you success with your application. Would like to see that happen.
Thank you.
That could be good for our students. When it's good for our students, it's good for our county.
That's certain.
No, I fully support it. I appreciate you guys researching this and bringing it to us. Obviously, this was an 18, 19 project, and hopefully, I don't know what item number we made it to this year on the capital list, but this, in essence, will just get us a few more items on that list knocked out of the way that we're not having to look at next spring. So, it's a win-win for everyone involved, so thank you, guys.
You will.
Hopefully, it'll go well.
Do you have anything there?
Well, I, I think I'm pretty familiar with what they're saying, so I'm 100%, supportive. 100%.
Yeah, this is a way for us, as a county, to basically double our money if this grant application is, is approved at the state level.
I have a motion to approve.
I make a motion, will you?
Second.
Go ahead and run, Jamie.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
On behalf of the citizens of Stokes County, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good to have you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the Pine Hall Shelter, Trail Up Dayton Fee Proposal. I believe Grundt presented this to us last meeting, and, uh, we just need a vote. Approve and vote on the fee for the new shelters. It's pretty much the same as that.
Well, before we have, yeah, about now, but before we can have any discussion, we need a motion, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Okay. Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move on to the Artist's Way Lease.
Mr. Chairman, this right here is to allow us to move forward with a lease signed with our current tenant, and this lease is a month-a-month basis. And this will allow us to have more time to look at the structural integrity of this, this building after, after review and after seeing and going down and looking at what was there. It looks like some improvements need to be made, and some reconstructions of the inside, and some remodeling. With that said, I would love to just go ahead and continue with this current lease at the correct pay rate of monthly rate and on a monthly basis until we decide what we're going to do.
Make a motion that we approve your statement on the amount and the lease.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
One thing, I, I read through the lease that Ty put together, and, and the month-a-month is a good idea while these guys sort out what they're doing, but I like to get that flammable stuff out of there, and it says in the lease that can't be in there, so I hope you guys will do that.
The what name?
She's been moving, there's, they've been moving a lot of things out of the basement.
Okay, the stuff that's in the basement that's flammable needs to get out of there. We have to...
Yep.
But, yeah, I'm good with the month-a-month lease, otherwise.
Mr. Christian Ward.
Based on Commissioner Morrison's observation, that condition that needs to be met, are there any other conditions that need to be met on a more urgent basis than sometime in the undetermined future?
Not really, it's, mainly the, the danger factor we had in the basement, and we get that cleaned up and get it out, and they are in the process of doing that. And then there's some remodeling that probably needs to take place as far as them serving, I'm not saying that there are, or any, any kind of violations, I think it just needs to be, uh, remodeling done and on the inside, and I don't think the current tenant is, she's into the, the bakery side of it, and she don't really need as much room as, as, as the 4,000 square feet that her floor is there. And it's a possibility that we could go in and start redesigning how this is being used, and then she could have smaller portion, and the county can utilize another portion for other, other great things for Danbury.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll announce to the Wanted Coos, Senior Senior Advisory County Council Appointment. Linda Brown was nominated to meet on August 26, 2019, so I'll open the floor up for any further nominations.
Make a motion, nominations be closed.
Motion, uh, motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'll poll the board now.
Brown.
Brown.
Same.
Brown.
Brown. Okay. We have to move on to the Stokes County...
Jury Commission.
Jury Commission Appointment. Herbert Bennett was nominated at the meeting on August 26, 2019. I'll open the floor up for any further nominations.
Once again, I'll make a nomination, that nominations are closed.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll poll the board now.
Bennett.
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 Bennett. All right, we're going to the Danbury ETJ Appointment. Donnie May was nominated at the meeting on August 26, 2019. I'll open the floor for any further nominations.
Once again, I'll make nominations, uh, and ask that they be closed at this time.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll now poll the board.
May.
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 Aye.
Aye.
Now, move on to IMG, Resolutions, DSS Board and Board of Health.
Mr. Chairman, you already had your public hearing on, on, on this concern, and now you have your resolutions for the DSS Board, and you also have a resolution for your Health Board, and allowing them to move forward with their own, their own boards, and the Commissioners needs to be their acting board.
Okay. Do they have a motion on this?
I move.
Second.
Approve the resolutions.
Do they need to be approved separately, the Resolutions, Board of Health, DSS Board, separate?
I think so.
Okay. Do they have a motion for the approval of the DSS Board?
Make a motion, we approve the DSS.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. I want to make sure, Ty, that either in the statute or in the resolution, that the hiring authority for the director is with this board, it's not with this board. Is that correct? For both of them, right? Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Christian Ward.
Oh, a question. Even though the hiring authority would be with the Board of Health and DSS Board, the salary is set by this board, will continue to be set by this board?
Yeah.
The states are...
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion for the Health Board Resolution.
Sir?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on now to our last one, that we added to it, the Transportation Senior Services for DSS. Do I have a motion on that?
Make a motion, we approve the two contracts that were discussed for transportation as backup for DSS.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please. Commissioner Morrison, backup for DSS, I think that's backup for Wyvety, Wyvety will continue in the primary, and these providers will do work in addition to what Wyvety will be doing.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Senator Hesch can take us into a quick decision.
To consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one A three.
Make a motion, we enter closed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Make a motion with Jar.
Any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.